This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the May 10th, 2018 meeting of the North Haven Board of Ed to order at 6:30 and as I look at the clock after two years, I am proud to say we have a new clock. Before we start our meeting tonight, we're going to have a brief presentation on the proposed new report card for the elementary grades. So I'm going to turn this over to Melinda McKenna, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, to introduce our guests.
Okay, thank you. So this evening, we'll do my report with Tracy and Jody first thing. Tracy Gambardella is our K-5 Language Arts Coordinator and Jody Wilcox is our K-5 Math Coordinator. And they will be sharing report card revision work that they have been instrumental in moving forward in the district. They presented this work to the CNI group earlier in the year, but I thought it was important for the full board to hear about the changes that we'd like to put in place for next year. Both of these ladies were hired for their coordinator positions in the summer of 2016. And at that time, I knew one of our next levels of work needed to be to make revisions to the elementary report card in order to match the new Connecticut Core Standards that had been in place for a few years. But I needed to wait because I wanted teachers to really be comfortable with the curricular shifts and the assessments we were using before we threw a report card onto that. So at their interview, I gave them a performance task of chunking out an action plan for this work and how they would go about it. And at the time, neither of them knew each other. And for the past two years, they have been living that action plan because we have put that into practice and they have done a whole lot of revision with teacher teams and have led this work beautifully. So I'm going to turn it over to them to start to share their work.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to be here and excited to show you what we've done and that the committee has worked so hard. And Jody and I, it's unique because we come from opposite ends because Jody has been here in North Haven and I come from a different district. So we had very different perspectives. And the beauty of this is that Jody really helped me to remember the value of things that were already in place here. And I was also able to bring my experience from a standards-based report card and having gone through it in my previous district. So it was great to kind of work on this project and come together. So we did have a group of committee members and these are the committee members that were from Clintonville, Green Acres, Montwhee's, Rich Road. They also included our math coaches and our literacy coaches as well. We came together in the fall as a committee and we worked on just looking at report cards and our report card and the things that we really wanted to do and put in place. And from that, we developed a piloting committee and we had some teachers who were willing to pilot the report card, which I'll talk about in a few slides. So a standards-based report card identifies the most important skills in each grade level and content area in alignment with Common Core Standards and district curriculum. And it should be noted that although the current report card predates us in our roles, it did reflect some of the Common Core Standards and we just needed to tighten it up. And I'll talk about this in a little bit, but the biggest shifts were in Language Arts. It's kind of archaic, but when you go along, we say, "Oh, I had to change the whole report card," and Jody said, "We made tweaks." So it had already reflected the Common Core, but then we needed to just make some adjustments to it. So again, we began this work in the fall and what we did was we established that initial committee, we reviewed, re-researched, we reported, and we looked at grading. We also established the standards and we also created grading rubrics. And we made sure that there was a good balance of all of the Common Core Standards as well as the things that we're doing as well. In the winter, we had a draft report card template and we provided an overview for the district staff. And then we also established our piloting report card committee and we had them come together and we did some work with them as well. And we talked about, you know, how we would like this to go out to the parents in March. In spring, we developed a parent pamphlet and we also created teacher talking points for parents at conferences so that when they showed them the piloting report card, they had some comments to make about it as well. What was unique about this is that we also had parents fill out a survey when they were done to tell us how they felt about it. And everyone really liked it. And then we brought the committee back together and we reviewed the process and also we reviewed the feedback that we got from parents. And for me, the most important piece at the bottom is that teacher handbook. That's something that's in progress for both Language Arts and Math at this point. And that's so that when we are able to roll this out to the entire district, we could show teachers where does this exist? How do we find this in our curriculum? And it is right there in everything we do every day. So there are six sections to the report card in regards to Language Arts. There's also an effort grade for reading and writing. You'll notice that we have reads and comprehends grade level texts, reading foundational skills. We also have reading literature and informational tasks, writing, language skills, and speaking and listening. And so these sections are what will be graded for Language Arts. And again, a good amount of the change came from Language Arts in this area.
On the math piece of it, Tracy alluded to a couple of times that Language Arts did have the major shift going to the Core Standards. I felt very fortunate that Paul Castiglione and Laurie Minkowski had the foresight when they were doing this report card five or six years ago that they thought about putting in those standards. So when we came together and we looked at the math, that core committee in the fall, we looked at what was deemed priority standards on the current report card, we looked at the major standards from the state and came together and made some revisions in reference to what the state had and what we had. So the categories for math will be the counting cardinality, which is in kindergarten and is going to set the foundation for the rest of the math skills. Our operations and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations in base 10, which really focuses on some place value. We have fractions, measurement, data, geometry. And what will be new is our mathematical practices. In the past, we haven't had an effort grade in math. It's really hard to go ahead and judge effort in math. I could have a problem that takes me two hours to finish and Tracy could have a problem that takes her two minutes to finish. We could put in the same effort, but that really comes down to skill and concept knowledge. So the mathematical practice piece that will go in, there's two to three in each of the grade levels and that will assess the perseverance and the problem solving and look at those strategies. Other components within the report card, we have our science and our social studies, which both Jill Metz and Patty White had a hand in developing. The special area is not changing as of right now. And the behaviors that support learning is what our work, emotional, social emotional, and our work habits would be. And that was developed with Zoe Dolan and Dana Elise Titoceo. We're moving from a five-point scale to a four-point scale. Tracy and I and the committee, we did a lot of work looking at what other districts had. And there's some really good work out there and it might look familiar to some people within the room itself. We came to the four-point scale, which is most of what everybody has used. We made some tweaks to some of the wording within those scales and really came to what we rolled out even to teachers today at grade level meetings to a rubric that we think would be friendly to teachers, understandable to students, and to parents. The behavioral piece of it will be the math practices, the effort in Language Arts and behaviors that support learning. Those will go to a three-point scale with a C that the student consistently demonstrates the behavior and I that the behavior is inconsistent or that we rarely see the behavior. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you think we'll have the teacher handbook ready for the fall?
Yes, absolutely. I just want to say thank you so much, ladies. You've done such a great job leading this work and many thanks to the teachers on the committee and those that piloted it. Because the teachers who piloted actually rated our existing report card and the new one. So they did double the work and we're very grateful for that. But we couldn't change the aim for children and families, but it was a way to solicit the feedback that was really meaningful to us. So yeah, we're very grateful.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Really good stuff. But I do have some questions.
Sure. Can you talk through a little bit, in addition to aligning with other districts, was there other rationale from taking it from a five-point scale to a four-point scale?
Sure, I can talk to that. Let me back it up. So our original five-point scale, when you look at going to the four-point scale, we really matched, if you look at that number three, we matched our E, what was expected, and our M, what was mastered. One of, and to give you a little background, this is where Tracy and I had the most discussion was around that. Because I stuck to our five-point because that's what I knew, that's what I was comfortable with, and she came in at a four. So that was months of, you know, really trying to work through what would be best for the district. So let me speak to the five-point scale. With that scale, we would always tell teachers in June that you couldn't use an E. An E on the old report card was that's what was expected. Well, at the end of the year, it's expected that the standards on the report card are mastered. So it was a hard conversation. It was a difficult conversation to have with parents for people to understand, well, why isn't, you know, the expectation all year in November, you're doing what is expected to do. For example, if kindergarten is knowing 10 high-frequency words in November, that's if Tracy gets 10, she gets what's expected. If it's in March and 15 is expected, she gets that E. But then in the old scale, when you come to June, if Tracy doesn't make the 25 required for kindergarten and she still makes that 10, that's not expected at that time. Anything lower than that 25 would be progressing toward the grade level. So almost at the end, teachers really had a four-point scale for the June report card. It's hard to sift through.
That makes sense, yeah.
But so, quite honestly, we looked at many report cards and talked with many people and found that 99% of the people that we talked to had a four-point scale. And again, I was the holdout for the five-point. So I really, and I would say to Tracy all the time, I can't, we can't change something. We both have to be comfortable with it. So Tracy was very gracious and won points and said, "Okay, we'll go with the five-point." And then I, hmm, nothing about it. So we really, that I feel like we're in a good place with because what's happening, so students can get a three at any point during the year with the understanding that in June, that three means that you've mastered it. If you look at the last few words of that three for the skills taught at this time, so what's expected November at this time, what's expected in March at this time, and what's expected in June are things that are mastered. In the parent handbook that we'll give out in November when report cards go out and during conferences, we have a section that addresses that, you know what, you might be a three, a three, and you might be a two if you don't go ahead and make that. And it's not that that's a dip for that student, it's that as we go on, each snippet in time, the expectation increases. So with that increase, your child might need a little bit more time on that skill or concept. Is that clarified?
That helps, thank you.
Okay.
Sure. About the behavioral?
Yes.
Your handbook for teachers, will there be a rubric to help them understand, you know, well, is the student inconsistent or they rarely demonstrate? That's, you know, kind of a judgment. And so I want to, same child had two different teachers, he'd be rated the same way, you know, not I and what and I and I love.
Right. So we have a couple of things with that, Doc. The first is certainly, math is really very concrete. So with the math practices, we can have that rubric established that said, this is what, you know, the consistency looks like and those characteristics. As far as the behavior that supports learning, that can be a little bit more fluid and changeable. So that's a conversation we could definitely bring up with the committee and see what we can develop through that.
And in this case, in the Language Arts case, I love the effort score and I actually love this as a classroom teacher because I had some students who maybe weren't passing the reading benchmarks, but they were sustaining independent reading at their level for 20 or 30 minutes. And that's where I could give them, you know, a C and say to a parent, you know, listen, they struggle, you know, reading what were the level that were expected this time, but they're doing great in the classroom. They're really striving to do well and they're putting a lot of effort forward. So that's why we like this behavior scale.
And Doc, to piggyback on what your question, getting off of the behavioral side, the academic side, we're in the process of developing those rubrics for each, for math, for each standard on the report card at each period of time. So teachers will know, what do I get for a four? What do I give for a three? What do I give for a two and a one? So this way, there's not the inconsistencies we're trying to work with.
And this year, as we roll the report card out for the first time, we have put three days for parent conferences each time, like we had talked about at CNI, so that they can be a longer block with parents and be able to really go over it.
One of the things that I'm curious about is you had teachers and families that were part of the pilot program. I know you said the feedback was generally positive, but what did families have to say? What did teachers have to say?
Actually, we met with teachers today, which was, so Jody and I are lucky to have grade level meetings and we've been meeting with the entire grade level across the district. And we started with grade four and five today. And we had some of the pilot teachers actually speak out. And today, the teachers were saying that it painted a clear picture for parents and for them as well. Our curriculum definitely aligns to it and there are places in the curriculum where they can say, "Hey, we did this in the curriculum and it's on the report card." We had a few nitpicky things about Cs and Is and Ls and things like that, which we knew were going to come forward. And we're happy to share the results. We can send them to Joyce if you'd like to see them, the survey results. That would be fine as well. But the teachers were very positive. Parents thought that it was very clear, it painted a great picture of a kid, and they felt it was more specific to the grade level. And I know that both Language Arts and Math, the beauty of the Common Core is it does, the grade level stand upon the shoulders of the one before it. And you can clearly see that. I can speak to, in grade three, four, and five, in the speaking and listening, it talks about, you know, talking to your peers in third grade and using, you know, different types of vocabulary. And we kept the same standard, three, four, or five. So it says the same thing, three, four, or five, which is as well. So there's some consistency. I think parents will be able to put the report cards side by side and really see how the child is moving. In regards to K and 1, they had the same report card, very different standards for K and 1. So it was important to definitely separate those report cards and make it very explicit.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, there are several people on the audience sitting on the floor. I need to ask you to take a seat. If there was an emergency, you'd get trampled. So please find a seat. We can get extra chairs from outside if need be. How many more seats do we need? Do we have enough? Okay, thank you. Next, I'd like to just take a look at our cassette consent agenda. We have the minutes from our April 12th, 2018 meeting. And I don't know why, Tom, I've been a little teary-eyed here. For the retirement of Tom Marak, our future problem-solving teacher and all at the North Haven High School. Retirement of Mary Lee DeGennaro, our world language teacher at North Haven High School. Retirement of Elizabeth Melunda, our special ed teacher at Green Acres. And retirement of my dear friend Jacqueline Monk, our world language teacher at the North Haven Middle School. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
May I just, of course, that was a hard, those four names really hit me hard. You know, I never worked with Mary Lee, but I know she has a wonderful reputation. I never worked with Tom except in the North Haven Educational Association. And he worked hard, Danny and I, and his contributions were also on the CEA, on the state level. I've known Tom, who my son was in future problem-solving. So I've been associated with him on several different levels. For Jackie Mont, you know, I worked with her at the middle school. She's just delightful and so creative and just, we served on the NEAS committee one time. And we had actually no common time that we could meet. And she was so gracious and she really did a wonderful job. And then, of course, Betty started as a tutor in Montwhee's and went to Green Acres and is the most giving person to students. And you can call her up and say, "I need A, B, C, and D, do you have it?" And she'll say, "Yeah, I have A, B, C, and D," and she'll bring it over to you. And she's a wonderful support to teachers, to parents, and to students. And actually, I wrote to her and I said, "I'm going to vote not to..."
And Tom, just on a personal note for me, I mean, through negotiations, through learning a lot of things, you taught me quite a bit and gave me a little new level of respect for the ongoing back and forth. So I want to say thank you and I wish you the best in what you're doing. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Appearances? Motion passes? Let's go to our Board of Ed Student Reports. Who wants to go first? You can go first, it's your last one, right?
Oh, you're first, yeah. Yes, my last one? Oh, please, there's no June meeting?
Oh, June meeting, yes, I forgot. Once the warm weather comes. I don't care, I forget what month we're in.
So our senior prom is May 18th, so next Friday, not this one, but the following, at Anthony's Ocean View. Project Rab will be holding fundraiser car washes this Saturday, May 12th, June 2nd, and June 9th at the Washington Ave McDonald's. Senior awards are May 23rd at 7:00 PM at North Haven High School. And AP exam starts this Monday, May 7th, and will conclude at the end of the week. Also, Mrs. DeGennaro, this is her first year being a class advisor, and that's the only way I know her, but she was a fantastic teacher. And she did so much work. She was, a lot of respect. And also for Mr. Marak, who had for four years. Maybe been a long four years. But yeah, one of my favorite teachers on the down-low, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you for, it's always great when our students kind of acknowledge the teachers and the relationship that they had with them. All great.
Actually, Rachel had a very nice article in the paper.
Why nobody says that? Thank you.
Hello. So for our junior class, we had our incredible movie night last week that ended in success.
What movie did we start in?
The Incredibles.
Oh, The Incredibles, okay, sorry, I missed that.
And there will also be a dodgeball tournament in two weeks.
Okay, I'm sorry?
A dodgeball tournament.
Okay.
The junior awards are scheduled for next week as well.
What about Mr. North Haven? Was that able to be rescheduled this year?
Oh, I believe, yes, it was rescheduled to sometime in May. I don't know the date. Charlotte might know it. I think it's June.
June 8th or 9th.
Okay. I think the date is Friday. Sometime during.
Great, thank you. And also, unfortunately, this year I was out of town for the spelling bee. How did our team do?
Our team, we did pretty well.
They were embarrassing.
Both of them confused me. They were, yeah.
Wes and Dr. Cronin?
The both judges, they were confusing, you know. Thank you. Oh.
With the wording, how they said the word?
No, no, they didn't pronounce, they were not the ones who pronounced the word. But, you know, they were looking and looking and looking and I said, "Okay, you know, we're good to go." I restarted the spelling, but that was not the case. So they actually judged our spelling, so I had to rewrite the whole thing. And I probably, probably wrote it down the wrong way. I think I got it the first time. So that's how I got eliminated. But, you know, next time, hopefully, it'll be.
Well, Goldie, I have to tell you that my glasses were in the shop getting away. And all I had was reading glasses, so.
Well, that's always next year, so.
Joe, will you take this back to the foundation? And I understand that students won. But, no, that was great.
Sponsored by the North Haven Education Association.
Great, that was great. Yeah, I saw a lot of pictures online. I kind of put that into my chairman's report. One of the things I do want to talk about is I put under, asked Dr. Cronin to put under unfinished business, signage of the North Haven Middle School. I had been contacted by two people, actually, who were upset that at the middle school, when you look from the high school over to the new middle school, there's a sign there that says, "North Haven Middle School," and it has the Indian mascot underneath it. I want to tell people that sign was not purchased new, that was not something the middle school community had. Basically, what we did was we reused a sign that we already had and put it up there instead of spending the funds for it. Someone has come back and said they'd like to perhaps see if they can get donated to have a new sign, and they're more than welcome to do that. But I would just like to say to everyone, we are not buying anything new that goes to any of the schools does not have the Indian mascot. And that includes all of our uniforms, all of our coaches' shirts, our school athletic wear, the polo shirts people wear, like Steve or something. Anything new that's being purchased does not have that mascot on there. I had told these people that previously, but when they saw that, it caused them some concern. Saying that, I just want to say that the Board of Education has no control over what parent groups purchase. They choose to buy something with an Indian mascot on it. They have the hats or the t-shirts, I've seen them. We have no control over that, that's what they can do. But the Board of Ed had made a decision, not a vote, we just kind of had a consensus about two years ago, that we would no longer add the mascot to anything new that we purchase for the school. So that was that. Any new business anyone wants to add before we go to our report of standing committee?
I did see something in the paper. NBC Connecticut had the Freedom of Information Act request item, and we were mentioned in it. So I just wanted to have a, this came out like today, I think. I got the Google alert today. So I think we can.
They were, actually, I believe they contacted all school districts in Connecticut. And it was around air quality concerns, specifically at the middle school, but it was for the old building. So when we contacted them to let them know that that building no longer exists and that we have a new school, that was, you know, that was sort of the end of it.
For some reason, like they had said that North Haven and one other town were the only ones that.
Right, was it the one where they asked for the absences or use of absence on a particular day? Remember like three weeks ago? It was 17, I think, an investigative reporter from NBC Connecticut.
Was it about the air quality or was it about, oh, the list of absences?
Yes.
Yes. I really had some serious reservations about releasing a list of staff who are on leave and the reasons for their leave.
Sure.
I just, now, I talked with our attorney about it and she wrote, she gave me a response for the initial request. And then maybe a week later, I got a second request. And I just wrote back at that time and said, "We don't keep it in this, we don't keep that information in the way in which you're asking, which we really don't." I think they wanted a one-page or two-page with everybody's name or initials, what the reason for their absence was, how long they'd been out.
Isn't that violating HIPAA?
Well, I thought it did, but yeah, apparently it does not.
So I was surprised by this too because I would, they asked for general categories. Is it like a medical leave or, you know, some other, some other kind of leave? And it actually, it looks like it doesn't violate HIPAA.
But if you're giving somebody's name out and you're saying that that person's out because they have the mumps.
I'm not sure that, I don't know that they wanted the name.
I think they wanted to know by like an ID number or something.
That's right. Or state number.
What was the, what was the point?
Yeah, what was the purpose? It was an investigative report looking at Freedom of Information Act requests, see how easy it would be to get information from 169 disparate towns. It's actually 190 various school boards, but it's 160 from 169 towns. So it was proving a point of how difficult or easy it is to get information from people. They asked for information that they're not necessarily using, in my opinion, in a valuable way. It was more of like a test. And she stated that this is like a valid request that may be asked again. So, it's hairy. This is like a very sensitive topic.
Yeah.
To be talking about. So I'm wondering if we should have a way to address it in the future so that we're both, like...
Well, right now, I, my response to the reporter was that, under Freedom of Information, you probably know this, you don't have to create documents.
Right.
If you have the document available, then you must release it. And so, as I was interpreting the request, we don't keep a document in that way. Those are individual situations, and we don't have, you know, a place where we put everybody who's on leave. And so, I felt I was being honest with her when I said that I didn't have it. You know, if they keep pushing it, I'll certainly work with council and do what we need to do. I just had grave concerns.
I hear, and I think it's good that we're talking about this, just because in case anybody else were to see it, they might get the wrong impression, you know? Or, or a different impression of what's going on. Would you be okay if I reached out to the reporter and just said, or somebody should reach out to the reporter and just say, like, "We feel we're in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act"? Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'd be happy to do that. I thought I had in my last communication, but I will follow up with that.
Because it was, I feel like it casts sort of a negative light when I know we would never...
So it was, we were one of two districts?
We were one of two districts that responded and said, because of some past precedent, some prior case law, that we didn't, we weren't obligated to hand over this information, and they made a point to single us out.
Yeah.
I can send, I can send you the article.
Yeah. I still, if I have to release it, I will. Certainly, I will do what I legally have to do. But out of respect for people, I just thought it was an unnecessary request. And now, in here, I didn't know what she was doing with it. Now, hearing that they're probably not even using it, but it was just to prove a point.
That's my impression of what the article stated. It was kind of to test.
Right.
The boundaries of FOIA.
Yeah. So I did, I did work with council on that, so that I was not just being a renegade, I assure you.
I guess that was newsworthy for that reporter.
Well, I think they've got a lot of time to fill. Truly, I mean, they can only do the weather so many times. And so...
And winter's over.
Then we got one from the same station about, they went through documents and found schools that had been cited for air quality problems. And they were following up on that, and they wanted to know, you know, we were, our middle school was cited at that time. And, you know, we said, "We have a new middle school," and that ended that. It was a brief conversation. So I think that they're, I think that they're actively looking for things. And I think it really, I get the sense that the television stations are like competing with one another, Crime Stoppers and investigative reports and, so.
You should tell them about Rachel, what an awesome tennis player she is. That'll give them something to talk about.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell them about the dodgeball game.
(Laughter). I love the Project Grad fundraiser.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
I get their videos watched.
See, I don't think they want good stories.
Too bad. I don't know, and we could talk about that later, and I'm sure the attorney will say. I just think that if ID, if teacher ID 123 is out sick, why she's out sick is her business and her employer's business, and not open for, for anyone else. Unless they're trying to get something done to figure how many people in North Haven have the flu, how many teachers have the flu or something.
No, no, they wanted to know how many people were on family medical leave, how many people were on leave for disciplinary reasons, how many people were on leave for illness themselves.
Okay. Okay. ACES.
ACES. We met today, and it was actually a very cut-and-dry meeting, just talking about budgets and calendars and really nothing that I need to bring back.
Okay.
I'm not sure we'll make something up.
Did they have their fundraiser?
Yes, they had their gala.
They did?
And it was very well attended. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there is one thing. They did...
They had your chance.
Yeah. At the previous meeting, I talked about how they were raising the pay for substitute teachers. And at this meeting, they raised the pay for substitute paraprofessionals, substitute secretaries, and substitute custodians. Because they're very, especially with the paraprofessionals, they're very, they really want to get quality people.
Absolutely.
They're doing, they have a very active advertising campaign.
Yes, they do.
Public radio and television.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction planning, Wes?
Yeah. Dana Corvo, Lisa Dosio, thank you, and Rebecca Carr joined us and to provide an update for the mental health support that we have in the district. We discussed a number of things. Some of the highlights included something that Melinda's going to talk about later, the NARCAN administration of NARCAN. And I think you're going to talk about that in a little while. Something called Go Guardian Software, that program, a program that monitors network use and identifies and reports on red flags with regard to suicide and violence. And Step Up, a program for students with school refusal issues. Those are just a few things that we discussed. Tracy?
School referred refusal?
Kids that want to come to school.
True.
Yes, true, that chronically absent.
Okay, sorry.
Tracy Gambardella joined us to discuss proposal to adopt the Teachers College Reading Workshop, which is a complement to the Teachers College Writing Workshop that's now in place. And Ms. McKenna reported that she expects necessary funds will be available soon to purchase the additional kits necessary for the implementation, and the committee recommended approval. Russ Dali and Wendy Wade from the Art Department joined us to discuss the possibility of providing photography internships for students who are interested in observing professional photographers in the field firsthand. The committee raised a number of questions, including travel distance, selection process, payment permissions, and so on. And it was suggested that she come and present to the full board sometime in the fall, I think.
Correct, they're gonna work on it over the summer.
And our next meeting is June 4th, and I think that that was, that's it.
Thank you, Wes. Finance and operations?
Finance and operations met earlier. For the period ending April 30th, we are still running a deficit, which are due to benefits. If everybody should remain healthy, we should be in good shape from now through the end of the year. Later on in the meeting tonight, we're going to discuss budget reduction, so we kind of table that for the full board meeting.
Thank you. Goldie?
We didn't meet yet since the last board meeting.
Okay. The Family Education Foundation, Joe Howard.
So we were, there was a meeting on Wednesday. As you probably can imagine, most of the meeting was dedicated to talking about the Spelling Bee and kind of thinking about ways to make it better and always keep improving. A couple highlights that kind of take away, as you mentioned earlier, the group of students won the Spelling Bee, which I think is, is nice. It added, nice, nice cap to the evening. The whole Spelling Bee has become a very nice, community-focused event. And Ridge Road School especially gets a lot of students there. Their teachers did a great job in the, in their costume and their team name. They had, obviously, had a lot of support. And it's nice to see over, this was the fourth year now that they've done this, that it's kind of, keeps growing and developing into kind of a must-attend type of event for people in the, in the education community here in North Haven, and just for the town in general. Over 14 years now, the foundation has generated and donated back to the education community almost $700,000, which is fairly impressive when you think about that. And they raised almost $25,000 at this Spelling Bee. There were 38 teams that participated. Next year will be the fifth year in a row, and you can mark your calendars. It's April 25th, 2019. The high school auditorium is reserved. We took a vote, and the foundation added a new board member, and their next meeting will be June 13th.
Thank you.
Is there an April what?
I'm sorry. 25th, 2019.
Okay, I have a conflict, Nancy.
You got some time to work around it.
It's fine, it's...
Well, at least you won't be confused. Is there any chance that they'll get rid of the wigs?
Yeah, I vote for that.
I, I think you guys looked great with, the costumes were great, and both Dr. Cronin and you, Wes, are good sports in dressing in your academic regalia for the...
That's because we didn't know going in.
Thank you. Policy, we're gonna have our first policy meeting with the new policy group at some point in June, early July. There's our, we've already discussed a couple of policies that need to be amended, so I'll put together the time. I know I said last one, though I'd try and get it, but I have been traveling a bit, so I've not been able to pinpoint a date, so we'll get that going very soon, so we can work on some of those policies over the summer. PTA Council?
So we talked a lot about the Spelling Bee, which was upcoming at the time of the meeting. I'm just very excited about that. Way to go, that was really fun. Good job, guys. There is a financial aid seminar for juniors and parents at the high school. We also had financial planners come to the Clintonville PTA meeting to talk about saving for college, which I thought was really interesting and a great idea.
That's scary.
That's hairy, yes. Terrifying. They had movie night at the middle school, where they saw Karate Kid and Screenagers, which was the educational movie. And then the Q and I after about screen time for young, young folks was April 30th. Ridge Road is fundraising for their playground on a continuous basis right now. And there's a lot of preparation for Teacher Appreciation Week. I love our teachers. There was also lots of discussion around the budget and the TERF Subcommittee as well. So there was some concern around, you know, what was going to be affected as part of the budget. So I'm sure that there are going to be lots of folks watching tonight, and, and a big crowd, so it should be good.
Well, then, we're gonna go right into our ad hoc committee committee.
Okay, so the last time that we met, we've met twice so far, we're meeting again on Tuesday. But of the, of the different points that we thought we would start to organize and discuss, we started off with a payment scale, if you want to call it, for Group 4. We have it in our policy, 3515B. We have four groups that we refer to. And the fourth group is commercial and for-profit organizations. So, yes, these include North Haven players, or students, or residents, but they can also include kids from other towns, and they pay to be a part of this organization. So what we did was, we looked at a bunch of different pay schedules from towns around our area. We looked at Stratford, we looked at Cheshire, Waterbury, people that had turf fields that offered rent, offered to rent them with and without the lights, and we compared the fees. West Haven is another.
Shelton.
Sorry, Shelton was the other, that was the one, not Stratford, Shelton. And some of them were so extremely expensive, we kind of talked about, they probably just don't want to rent them out because the price was so extreme. So we kind of, we went to the other end, and we looked at the ones that would be more reasonable, and so that our kids could use the fields for those particular groups and for those particular teams. So what we came up with was prices for using the fields without lights and with lights. And I sent, we all have this in our packets, but I'll just go over it for people that don't have it in front of them. Without lights, if you rent, this is for one organization, so if one club wants to rent both fields at the same time, it would be $175 for one and an extra $100 for the second, so $275 for a two-hour period. If you are not the same organization, it's $175 per field. You could do the same things on both fields, same size, same everything, so it's not like you're restricting one or the other. Then with the lights, it's $250 for the first field, an additional $100 for the second with the same organization, and then $250 for each field if you're a different organization. The reason why it went up is because of our estimated cost on the electric. And we don't know exactly what that is yet, because we don't have anything to compare it to yet. So we figured that would be a cost that we could revisit in a year's time, once we see how much that goes up. The cost pretty much, so, the custodial fees, so we talked about custodial fees. Phil was there, and he gave us the cost of the per-hour salary for our custodians. So Monday through Friday, I believe he said their typical hours are 8:30 to 3:30. And so, if they were asked to stay, or if they were needed to stay, I believe he said it was just under $30. So just for ease, I rounded it to $30 an hour. But it was just under by, I think, a dollar or two, wasn't it? Amanda in general, so please jump in. Saturdays, I believe it was $48 or $49, so we put it at $50 an hour. And then Sunday, it's time and a half, so it's a little bit more, so that went to $65. And again, I think it was something like $63, so it just made it easier to make it $65. We also added that teams and organizations are required to supply an insurance certificate naming the town of North Haven as additionally insured, which I think is pretty typical. Cost of lining the fields, Phil Diana was gonna see what that cost would be, because there are some teams that would want, lining the fields, talking about the other fields at the athletic complex. So this encompasses the athletic compass, the athletic complex fields as well. So if they wanted to have a softball game, or if they wanted to have a soccer game, and we, or a lacrosse game on that grass field, and he needed to line it, what would that cost be? So he was gonna come up with that, and that would be something that we would add to this. The next time we get together, which is on Tuesday, we were going to talk about, well, one of the things that came up in between this meeting and Tuesday is the fee for renting the fields out for more than two hours, because there are some teams that might want to have some kind of tournament or something like that. And so, again, with that, we'll look back at what similar towns have charged. But, you know, the purpose of this was to ensure that we were making it cost-effective so that no monies would come out of the educational budget at all, but at the same time being affordable, so that we're not telling the kids in our town that they can't use it, because, because, I mean, really, the money that pays for this is coming from the parents' pockets and their tuition, when they originally pay for their kids to play. So we didn't want parents to have to pay an exorbitant amount of money in order for them to use the field. So we tried to keep it as low as we could while still covering any fees so that our budget is not...
Has, Steve, I saw you back there, someone asked you, has anyone rented the field yet or approached you yet for renting the fields?
In that category, outside of our youth organizations, no.
Okay.
Didn't we have, there was the...
Soccer guy?
Wasn't he a soccer guy? No, it was a lacrosse guy that talked to...
Oh, Eric Bailey.
Thank you, yes. So he wanted to rent it.
Correct.
And so, he's on the schedule, and he didn't know...
That is correct.
Right, so, so he hasn't paid anything yet, because we needed to solidify this before he actually wrote out a check? He was ready to write out a check last week, and I said, "Hold off," because we didn't, I didn't know what to tell him. So he has, he is on the schedule, and I don't think they've used it yet, but...
Tonight was the first night, actually.
Okay, but they are prepared, they, these fees were given to him, so he is aware of the possibility of this being the fee. So I don't know where we go from here. I don't know.
I think what you have to go to, if you look at something, you know, your ad hoc committee made some choice ideas. You came to the board now, and the board needs to, to vote on it. They should have probably had this as an action item.
Okay.
For discussion, especially if we're gonna start getting people interested in there. We need to get those revenues in. But there's a couple of things we have to talk about, about the revenues. If we vote for this as a board and agree to it, who, where does the check get made out to? Do we have a specialized account that we want to put that money into? So there's a lot, a lot to it there that we have to look at when we get payment from whomever's got it.
So I had sent Tina an email, were you able to?
I reached out to her. So there's a lot, a lot to it there that we have to look at when we get payment from whomever's...
Right. So I had sent Tina an email, were you able to?
I reached out to her attorney, and I haven't heard back from her. We're gonna meet with her next week to talk to her about it.
Okay, to talk about?
To talk about the, if it is possible for us to set up a separate fund as a Board of Eds.
So then, right now, we'd, you know, I don't think we should wait long to invoice somebody if we agree on this. Where does that money go?
It would go into the rental fees that go over to the town at this point, because we don't have anything set up for it, or we don't know if we can at this point.
So what I'd like to do then, if we add this on here tonight, and I wanna put some room on there in case we wanna adjust the cost at some time, at some point, I'd like to put down that if the money right now has to go to the town, we need to keep a separate sheet of how much went there, so that the, a separate entry, so that the town has to reimburse us when we make our own account, or if the town, we cannot have our own account, the town has to reimburse us for that cost.
So I will keep a separate ledger, you know, for the, for the board, and report that. I can add that to my monthly stuff that we send over to the board. Do you want a monthly basis? Like we do with the other?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, I can, I can set up something and...
In the meantime, though, we... Okay, so at this point, I think we need to add this to our agenda tonight, so may I have a motion to add to the agenda? Do I want to say the voting? The action item? Yeah.
To add the payment policy.
Okay. So may I have a motion to add the payment policy for commercial and for-profit, the athletic fields to our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion to vote, right?
To approve.
Right, so then, may I have a motion to accept the dollars that the ad hoc committee has put down, put down the charges that the ad hoc committee has put down, with the notion that we may have, we as a board can change that later on, after ninety days or more, after seeing how, how things work. I'm just trying to figure out the right word, you know, the legal ease to put in there, 'cause I just want it to be that if we, we find out that our expenses are gonna be higher than what these organizations are gonna charge us, I wanna be able to have something in there that allows us to accept, change, change the fee.
So you wanna call it a trial period, right?
For ninety days?
Yeah, let's try it for ninety days, that'll get us through September.
Well, do we meet in September, or so?
We meet in August.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry. So we meet in August, so that brings us to ninety days?
Yeah.
Yeah, so now, if we find that the additional cost for the lights is too high or too low, we won't know that in three months. Phil was thinking we would need, didn't he say?
We need a year for that.
But we would also need to find out about lining the fields, so we might know that a little bit more.
Right. So what do we, we change this? We'll, we'll put it down, we have our vote to accept, and we'll make our vote today to accept the pricing that the committee had put together. We will come back and review the pricing, and review our bills, or our costs, within ninety to, within ninety days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no reason, is there, why we can't just review it anytime we feel like it?
Right.
You really don't have to put the ninety day thing on there, I don't think. If we wanna review it, we can review it tomorrow. Well, we're not gonna be tomorrow, but...
Yeah, because we can review any policy at any time.
We can, we can. I was just giving it some time to, instead of someone saying, "Oh, you know, you're, we're losing money," at least give it time to, to work.
Yeah. We think we're, we gave it enough time, but we may change, a new price would take place September first, which would be the new school year.
I would say it wouldn't be, I think it would be, it wouldn't be retroactive for the...
Right, no.
So it would be, yeah, we would set a date going forward.
Right. We don't wanna change it sooner.
Right.
Yeah. He was pretty confident, though, that that would be, that the prices that we have there would cover.
Okay, did you get that? Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the cost of the fields for commercial and for-profit organizations?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It will she passes. Thank you for that, for the deal.
Sure.
I know it's gonna be difficult, and get more difficult, yes.
Yes. Well, everyone's asked to bring their inside voices to the next one. Be good. I'm kidding. Oh, yeah, I told them, bring your inside voice.
I did. Staff communications, Dr. Cronin?
Yes, I'd like to just follow up on the conversation we had last month about the Day of Silence at the middle school, and to report to the board about that.
You gonna do it up, huh?
Yes, I am. You may recall that there's a diversity group at the middle school, and they hosted a Day of Silence on April twenty-seventh to show support for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community, and they, they aligned their day with the National Day of Silence. Now, there was concern that this would take away from instructional time, and that such a day really didn't belong in school, and both policies and laws allow for such a demonstration, and I confirm again with legal counsel, as long as they don't interfere with the educational process. And there are some very specific things, there's a very specific standard that you have to meet in order to say something can't take place. I stopped at the middle school on April twenty-seventh with Mrs. Mena. We walked the building with Mr. Piazza. We were there when the students were passing in the halls, and I saw some students wearing stickers indicating their support. Instruction and class time was going on as usual, and we did all three grades. The other, the other indication that there was something going on was that there was a sign posted in the school lobby commemorating the day. As I said, classes were going on as usual across the grade, and the purpose of the day was mentioned during the morning announcements, and there was a moment of silence. However, I, I think that, it's my understanding that there is a moment of silence every day at the middle school, so it wasn't just a day of silence, a moment of silence in honor of the Day of Silence. There was an article in the New Haven Register about the group, and the students and what they were doing, and in the article, there was mention made of the students creating a video, and that caused some concern, that we were planning to show the video to the entire school, and that really wasn't the case. The group making the video hasn't completed it yet, and it was never planned that we were going to show it to anybody. I also followed up with Mr. Giamede, who's the staff member who oversees the diversity group, and he explained that members of the group set up an information table for interested students before school, and there were stickers available for those who wished to demonstrate their support. He said that there were a few, I don't know the numbers, students who chose to show their support by honoring silence, but I don't have an actual number of that. So I think that, you know, overall, it, it was also Eighties Day at the school, it was School Spirit Day, so it was also dressed up as the Eighties, and there were far more Eighties costumes than I saw stickers. There were a lot of Madonnas running around, and I don't mean the religious Madonna. So that's just where things are.
Do we have this also at the high school?
We have had it at the high school in the past. They, they're a diversity club, they're an actual club at the high school. They didn't elect to do it this year, but yes, they have done it in the past, according to Dr. Gallo.
Thank you.
So, scheduling of the June board meeting, we've been talking about summer board meetings, and I'm wondering if the board would consider postponing our June meeting until the twenty-eighth. That way, school is over, we can combine June and July, and so we can wrap up this year at the end of June, we can talk about the summer and what's going on, and then we can meet again right prior to the opening, as opposed to early June where there's just a lot happening, and it would be, I think, easier if we could do it that way. Does anybody have any opposition to that?
June, what was that?
It would be June twenty-eighth, Thursday, June twenty-eighth. And during the summer, and that would be considered summer, I guess, because school is closed, we typically bump our meetings up to five-thirty, six?
Finance was at five-thirty?
Finance was at five-thirty, thank you, and the board meeting was at six, so we'll just do our summer hours for that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think that that would be helpful. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the budget.
That's why I got coffee.
Yeah, yeah. There are a couple of documents, three documents that you have at your spots, and I just wanna give you an overview of each of those to begin with, and then I'm gonna get into greater detail. So one is a rectangular document with highlights, or with underlined, exactly. That is our current budget. That's the budget that we presented to the town of North Haven. This document here that you have are, the, this one are, contains the reductions which we're going to talk about in a minute, okay? And then finally, this sheet is a summary of the proposed cuts, and I'd like to work through that with you. And the three, these three are all aligned. I just wanted you to see our original budget with all of the information, specifically what we're looking at here for the reduction, and then I wanna talk you through those, okay? So I'm gonna start with this one. So the Board of Education's budget for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, as approved by the Board of Finance, now totals fifty-three million, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is a, an increase of one million, four hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars over this year. So that, that million-dollar increase is over two thousand seventeen, eighteen. The approved budget is a two-point-seven-two percent increase. So our original budget request was fifty-three million, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty, no, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, thousand and thirty-two dollars, which was a four-point-oh-two increase. So the final number, when you take all of that information, we were charged, we're charged with the responsibility of reducing the budget by six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Is everybody with me on that? Okay, so if you refer to the sheet that has the, just the explanations on it, I'm gonna refer to that. So, and tell you how we've come up with what we've come up with as recommendations. Again, these are recommendations, these are, this is for our conversation to start. So the first item is insurance, and the reduction is based on an updated projected cost increase for next year that's being proposed by our insurance broker. You know, one of the things to keep in mind is, we begin compiling the budget, actually at the end of October, and so when we're doing the first draft of it that you get, that's right at the end of December. So at that time, they gave us a health insurance number of six million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand and seventy-one dollars. Now that they've had additional months of claims, and they're able to trend our progress, or trend our patterns, they felt we could safely budget at six million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, which is a savings of three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and you can see that in, on the side there. The reduction of one vehicle for special education transportation, we've been able to do that because currently there are a number of fifth graders who will be going to the middle school in the fall. So they're all going to be going to the same middle school. Currently, they go to four different elementary schools, and so we're going to be able to combine some runs, and that will be a savings of at least one vehicle, and that's a savings of fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Mice for the elementary laptops, you know, that's really mouse.
Mouse.
Yeah, not little critters. They've already been purchased, we did that this year, and so we were able to take out that six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Power School Insights, the renewal cost, we had an agreement with Power School concerning Insights and that renewal cost. They did not meet the conditions of the agreement this year, and so in our original budget, we budgeted to renew that next year at eleven thousand dollars, and they've told us they're not charging us next year. So that was a savings of eleven thousand dollars. The reduction in the district-wide maintenance cost for copy machines, we had, we got some information on costs on competing vendors with Canon, and they were much more reasonable. We expressed that to Canon, and they have reduced our lease agreement, and they're no longer charging us for the cost of each copy, which was what we were paying for before. And so because of the research, and then bringing it to their attention, they've reduced our cost by sixty thousand dollars next year, which really says something about the need, the importance of shopping around. We had a wheelchair in the, a wheelchair in the budget, and we currently, we've purchased that already as well. In speaking with Mrs. Corvo, we have contracted services for students with hearing impairments with CREP, and that's, that can be reduced because of reduction, there's a reduction in the number of students requiring services, and the types of services being provided are less expensive. So it really is because of the student population, and that's a savings of thirty-five thousand dollars. Athletics, the professional services, is a reduction of four thousand dollars based on this year's actual spending. So being able to go back and look at our spending now in late April versus early December, we were able to adjust that number, confidently adjust that number. we were able to adjust that number, confidently adjust that number. We had also in the original budget, funding for girls' ice hockey. My recommendation to the board is that, given the limited budget, I don't know that this would be the right time to introduce a new sport. But that's for conversation. But that's why that's included at $12,000. For the game and ticket sellers, the reduction in the number of staff needed at each event, and we spoke with Mr. Blumenthal about that, that will save us about $6,000. The reduction in police and fire for home games, that's based on this year's actual spending. It's a small reduction of $1,329. Central office general cuts, so that's for myself, my office, Melinda's office, the business office, Special Education Central Office here, we eliminated $4,800. And then, staff development, district-wide, we reduced by $7,050, a general reduction. Curriculum writing, which is, which is done typically over the summer, that we will pay through our consolidated grant, which at this time of the year, we didn't know this in December, we will have some monies in there as the year is coming to an end. And so, we will use $25,000 of that for curriculum writing this summer. So, we reduce $25,000 from the general fund. I've got, next, the reduction, the reduction of the equivalent of two teaching positions due to enrollment. And I want, I want to talk about this a little bit. I'm really not prepared at this point to talk with you about where we would make reductions. And if we have to make reductions. When we learned that we had to reduce our budget by $674,000, I asked each administrator to go back to their budget and find proposed reductions that they believe, you know, in a, in a case of emergency that we would be able to still survive with. They did that. And they've given a number of things, including positions and more than two. But the other thing that I want to emphasize is, we have announced four retirements tonight. We have five resignations to date. And we have a request for a leave of absence. So, that, those, fulfilling those positions undoubtedly, I never want to say will, because I never want to hire someone because they're cheap. I want to hire someone who is right for the job. But given the number of positions that we will be looking for, I think it's likely there'll be some savings there with the replacements. And finally, there's a reduction of one paraprofessional position. And that's Special Education. And Mrs. Corvo said that we now have programs in place in district. And there are situations where in the past, the student needed a one-on-one to be in classrooms. But now, because they are in a more individualized program, they need less time with the one-on-one. And so, she believed we could reduce the paraprofessionals by one, one position. So, all of those reductions, and the paraposition is, well, I should go back. I said curriculum writing at $25,000. The two teaching positions, we estimated at $130,000. And then, the one paraposition at $15,000. We didn't include benefits in that. So, if you include the benefits, that would be a little bit higher, I guess. All of those reductions total the $674,196. So, I guess in closing, what I want to say is, while not ideal, we fared pretty well in this. Because, and I say that because towns around us are laying people off. I believe that I heard last week that, I believe it was Stratford, passed out 158 layoff notices. Hamden has two furlough days this year, I think, for this year. And I believe there may have been layoff notices handed out there as well. We're talking about trying to meet our staffing needs through attrition as best we can.
Dr. Dowling, I have just a question about kindergarten enrollment. Because I got that.
Right. Which is...
I'm looking back into the...
Right. That's a part of why I don't want to commit to the positions. Because we saw last year at the end of summer, we were adding positions. We added paraprofessionals because of kindergarten numbers. That's a critical piece of information. The other is middle school scheduling. It's usually completed by the middle of July, Mr. Castiglione. So, we have preliminary numbers from the middle school, but I don't have the final numbers. And so, I want to do this in the, in the most thoughtful way possible. And that will ultimately have the least impact on students if we have to do it. And so, that's why I'm asking just your patience in letting me work through, through this with Melinda over the summer. We'll keep you updated at the June meeting. I'll update you on this. And then, we can, you know, I certainly will talk with you more about it throughout the summer.
Well, can I have about three questions? First one is about insurance. How, how certain are you regarding the estimate that, I mean, just based on what we're going through right now with whole self-insurance thing?
Yeah.
Because that could be a budget buster if things don't go right.
You're right. But the thing that, that I'm really grateful to Tina for is that she is in weekly contact with our broker. They work together very, very closely. And I don't think they would have recommended this if they thought that it would put us at risk. I do trust them. So, that's how...
Okay, yeah. The next one I have was regarding the Special Education. Regarding the students with hearing loss, how accurate is that projection that Dana made that there's not going to be additional students who may need that service? And also, what's the replacement service that's being provided? Because you mentioned something about an equivalent service that's being provided that's not so expensive.
Right. No, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. There will be fewer stu, there are fewer students with hearing impairment in the district next year, just in terms of numbers.
Okay, so, she's sure that no one is going to come in and...
Well, you never know.
Yeah, because I know those services are expensive.
And when I say different services, it's still being provided by the same provider that we have.
It's just an additional...
It's just the needs of the student are such that, you know, you're, you're billed for different types of services. And so, the services that she's anticipating for the students who will need it will end up costing less next year.
Okay.
Was that three?
Yeah, that was three, yeah. Well, it was, it was, it was three, but I put two in one. Saved you some time.
Thank you.
So, can I just, can I just ask if we, I know Tina, you've been working very closely with our insurance partners on this. Is there a difference between the information that they were using last year at the beginning of last fiscal year to provide us their projections versus what's being used this year? Because this year, the deficit for insurance is, we don't run a deficit, but we're over by about $300,000. That's the same approximate amount that we're looking to reduce this year.
There was, there's better information this year than they had last year. Because we did not have them as a broker last year. So, they were coming on board. So, this year, they've got better information for this information, for that. Because we've had those conversations. Because, of course, I don't want to reduce it and then take that chance. But our claims are, like they say, our claims are our claims and we're not going to be able to change that. But, you know, we've talked about five-year cycles. We've talked about other trends and whatnot's going on in North Haven and stuff. So, we've had those real conversations. I have to say that, you know, because I voiced that concern with them, and, you know, we've come up with a better number.
Melinda, this is our first year too.
Right. No, I, I got you. It's just, it's the same, it's almost the same exact number. And so, we're, it's a challenge that we're dealing with this year. So, I just want to make sure that as we go through and as we see all of these, these cuts, reductions that I'm sure you have been very thoughtful about. I know that you've been very thoughtful about these. I don't want to end up in the same situation where we've already made really steep cuts and we're all of a sudden, you know, $300,000 in the hole for insurance again. So, for the reduction, the reduction in teachers, or the potential reduction in teachers. And I said you're not prepared to let us know where. But there, I mean, you were at the Clintonville PTA meeting...
Correct.
...the other day. And there's, I think it's over 20, 22, 23 students in the third grade classroom. It's a lot of eight-year-olds.
Right.
To be running around in there. And I just, I want to get a gut check from you on, like, if you have, I'm not going to hold you to anything, but if you have some kind of general idea of where the reductions in staff would be and what that would equate to as far as class sizes in proportion to the age of the students.
Principals have given me information suggesting what it would look like if, so, let's take Clintonville third grade, let's be concrete. Mrs. Dowling has wanted a third, fourth grade, to hold on to a third, fourth grade. We're working very hard to do that. There's, there are second grades at Montwies. We have three second grades that could, if we were in a very tight budget year, could go into two, three first grades could go into two second grades. I don't want to do that. So, we do have one position that is truly, it isn't needed because of enrollment. So, that position is half of this. And then, I'm hoping that we will find a way to get the other half, which is $65,000, which in, you know, a $52 million, $53 million budget, I think it's, it's reasonable to expect we can find that $65,000.
Thank you. For the reduction in the aides per enrollment needs is what it says here. I know it said we're reducing one specific to a special education...
Program.
...program. But we are not yet sure about what kindergarten enrollment looks like. So, do we have a plan should, should we get flooded with kind, with kindergarteners? And last year, we used aides to kind of help us supplement. And it seems as though we might not have that option this year.
No, I, because those aides are still in the budget. They're not part of the reductions at this point. This one aide is not one of the kindergarten aides.
But we would be, we would be capped at the number of aides that we have now minus that one, or is there...
Yeah, we would be, that's the number we are now minus one right now. Now, there also, I should explain to you in terms of paras. We look at that all the time. And Dana, the vast majority of our paras are Special Education paras. And Dana determines where and how many are needed based on students in the programs. So, she may have other reductions. And God knows what will happen during the year. We can't predict, which we'll need, we'll need to add. But she was very confident on the one.
I do just want to point out also, as far as the girls' ice hockey is concerned, I don't support that coming out of the budget if we're, if boys' ice hockey is still being funded. And there is, Cohen versus Brown University was a very similar situation. It was gymnastics in that case, but it was the same general track. You know, less students were interested. It was very expensive to, to provide the program. But what you do for boys, I feel strongly that we should do for girls. Just my two cents. And also, have we looked at section 10-222 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which allows us to push back on the Board of Finance? If we really do find ourselves in a crunch and if we, if we don't necessarily think that, that these, these cuts are appropriate?
I have not considered that. I don't know if the board wants to speak to that.
I think we, we push back wherever we can. When we pushed back, when they came back to us, primarily, it was because of the insurance. But when I look at this based on past experience and I look at the retirements that we have coming and the resignations that we, that we had, I look at some of these cuts here, the savings that Jen did with the copier, those are the kind of things that I'm really happy about seeing. I don't think we're going to have a worst-case scenario when I look at the, the number of retirements and what we're looking for in the reduction of enrollment or what the enrollment reduction is. I don't think we're going to have a worst-case scenario. What I do see that I don't like, that I don't like is, based on this and the reduction of enrollment, the reduction of the, of the money, we're doing everything, as Dr. Cronin says, we're keeping things going. We're keeping things going. We're working well. We're, we're continuing our excellent education. But are we going to that next step? That's what bothers me about the project.
I do want to say, just to echo what Anita said, the, the reduction in, like, the optimization in Special Education Transportation, the optimization in the copy machines, like, good job, you guys. That's great. That's a lot of money that you were able to kind of find there.
Jen Kosniewski is really, I have to say, she is remarkable.
She's great.
And I'm going to have her do my own budget. Personally. But, yeah, and she is, she reaches out to those vendors and she says, so, here it is. This is how it is. If you don't match it, we're going to go. And they come around. Sorry.
Okay, I, again, I'm not a big sports person, you know. But it does bother me that, again, the girls' hockey team was going to be cut. In June, very often, we get to the end of the school year. There's always a few surprise retire, one or two maybe retirements. One or two people that resigned for various reasons. So, that if we had some retirements, some combination of resignations, could we think of taking those savings? I mean, I know you're replacing staff, but if it's somebody that is retiring, you have potential saving, you know, $30,000. We could take 10 and put it back into the girls' hockey.
That would be up to the board.
You know, I look at, at this and as everyone knows, I've always supported the, the girls' hockey team. But the commitment this year and in the future, from what I see, is not there. So, for us to have it as a team and have to have it there every year or have it there, that commitment wasn't there.
It's something to think about. Yeah.
Right. And at the end of June, we will have more information about additional...
And actually, that's another reason, that's a good reason to postpone the, postpone it to June meeting June, because then we really, it's a week past, you know, and then anybody's retiring. We have to have their leave in by June 30 or so.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions on the board?
There is one thing in here that I know wasn't originally put, or was it put in the student conditioning? That wasn't ever put in your initiative, was it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so that's covered.
Now, the thing I just need to say about the strength in conditioning, and, and I just say this, I, it is a board decision. When, we couldn't fund strength in conditioning last year, the foundation gave us seed money for the first year. And it was the, sort of the understanding that we would pick it up the next year. The other difference between, and why I didn't include strength in conditioning here, the other difference is, strength in conditioning touches many more kids.
Right. And both males and females.
And males and females. So, you know, none of it is, none of it is good. So, you know, none of it is, none of it is good. It was just trying to do the best we could.
Is the groundskeeper, the additional groundskeeper in?
That is still in, yeah. And, you know, I wrestled with that, and you can certainly have conversation about it. I, you know, I go, I spend a fair amount of time at schools. And I know that our groundspeople are doing the best that they can. We have two, over 200 acres of land. It's in the spring, at this time of year, the outdoor sports consume their time preparing fields. But, for example, it bothered, really bothered me every time I drove into Ridge Road and saw that the road that you drive up, the property there, it was just sloppy. And I don't think that that's a way that anybody should come to our schools. And we ended up hiring outside person to come and cleaned it up, to take care of it, because our guys just couldn't do it. When I was at the middle school recently, I looked at the landscaping really closely. And while a beautiful idea, really and truly, you could have somebody full-time doing just that. Really, I mean, there are flower beds, there are annual beds, and there are perennials, and there are bushes everywhere. And, I mean, it's lovely, but it's going to take a lot of maintenance, because we also can't let it go. You know, we just can't afford to have it start looking sloppy. So that's why I didn't, but again, this was just a proposal for you.
And when we look at that groundskeeper, it's been asked for for about five years.
Just like we had, like our technology director had been asked for for about four or five years, if we can take those things and eventually get to them, and we can keep that here this year for the groundskeeper, then we'll look at it, we'll see what happens at the town vote, and hopefully these won't have to be amended.
Is there any possibility of hiring a part-time groundskeeper? I realize that there's a big demand, but.
We could, I think we looked into that, but wasn't that much of a cost savings?
And there's stipulations in their contracts, they can only have so many part-times.
So you do have some part-time?
We do have some part-time.
We're going into, we're going into negotiations with the custodians, so we'll have opportunity for conversation about this.
Are we maxed out at part-time groundskeepers?
We are. Yeah, the contract says something that we can only have four part-times, and we have four part-time, just don't answer this time.
Maybe there could be some conversation around hiring part-time people at certain points of the year when, you know, like the lawn mowing, you know, in the spring or early fall, you know, when Phil is the busiest, just to keep up with everything.
Yeah, I was at Montwies yesterday, and they were down there mowing, but they hadn't mowed in quite some time, and it was really clumpy and messy. That troubles me.
I think when you look at it, too, like Montwies, that's where the, you know, you have teams like Clinton and Guilford come in for competitive soccer games, and that's kind of the face of the school for some parents that are coming from out of town. And if they see a property that's not well-maintained, maybe their first thought is something different than what they've heard. You know, I know when you're talking about budget, every penny counts, but there is something I think is to be said about curb appeal and how you maintain your property and the face of, the face of the building and the outside of the building, because there are a lot of people that come in from out of town for, on a Saturday, for a soccer game or for whatever it is, and that's their one and only little snapshot of what our district is like.
But I even think for the residents, I know at Green Acres, in that front playground, there was, when we had that bad storm, there was branches, and I'd be gritting my teeth every time I'd drive by, because I thought, I know the kids weren't going in, but to me it was dangerous, but I understood that, you know, they can't get to it immediately.
I just don't think we should be bringing children into something sloppy. And I don't like the message that it gives them. And we could, because, you know, without verbalizing it, you know, you could say we're not caring, and that's not the case. It truly isn't the case. And I know Phil is doing everything in his power to get to them, but.
Any more discussion on the budget?
I think the only two things that I say that directly, I mean, I think everything here really affects kids, but the two things that directly affect students or our kids is the, are the hockey, the ice hockey and the professional and staff development, which, you know, ultimately filters down to the kids. So I would like to just, if we have the monies in, for the next meeting or whatever it might be, those are the two areas that I personally would just like to revisit, because I know that the professional and staff development affects classroom instruction, all of that as well. So, and the girls' ice hockey as well. I think they need just, you know, a fair conversation about that if the monies are there. The rest of the stuff, I think, were just, you know, really, really good cuts for things that are not necessary because of enrollment. And of course, the teacher positions, you know, the situation back then.
Now, can we really and truly keep in mind with the teacher positions, there is one less position that we need. So that is one half of what that number is. And again, I'm really hoping that through attrition, et cetera, that we will realize savings that we don't have.
So I know you said that the goal is always to hire the right person and not the most cost-effective. Well, yes. Person, but when we, when we see more seasoned folks leave through attrition, what does that equate to as far as a fairly new teacher?
So, a fairly new teacher, a teacher with a bachelor's degree at the beginning of the pay scale would be in the mid-40s.
Okay.
Yep. And somebody with a master's or sixth year at the top of the scale would be in the high 80s or low 90s.
So it seems like that should be, that should be fine.
Right. I truly believe it, and all my years of experience, it has taught me that. But, you know, I don't want to promise something that I can't deliver on, and I will keep you, I'll keep you apprised of it all through the summer.
I get a little uncomfortable saying, like, yeah, this looks good, without, you know, knowing more about what that's going to look like, especially when we have different options, you know, different positions that are being added and/or supported. So I think the strength in conditioning coach is a great idea. I think it's awesome, and I fully support that. If we're going to have an athletic program, let's do it right, right? Make sure that they're as safe as they can be, these kids. But, you know, having a sort of sloppy entrance to Montwies or Green Acres or Clintonville, it's not ideal. But what's less ideal to me is having one less teacher. It's tough.
Thank you. Melinda, you want to talk about the, now?
Oh, I.
The Narcan?
So you and I had spoken in the fall about Narcan in the schools. So Dana worked with our head nurse, Annette, and they have worked with the police and fire department to create this draft proposal that is in your packet. So I just ask that when you begin your policy work, if that group can look at it and consider adopting it. Dana has arranged some training for the nurses already on their professional development days, so they have participated in the training. So if the Board approves the proposal, which is really a very standard kind of state proposal that she has, they would be ready to move forward with that in the fall. So I just think it's a good, a good piece for that policy committee to look at.
Thank you for doing the work, and I know we talked about it earlier.
Can I just ask one clarifying question really quickly? I'm sorry to go back to this, but, so I know that we don't vote tonight on the budget.
Well, actually, I was just going to say, I was just going to say to Anita, I think we need to add to the agenda.
Yep.
A vote on the recommended changes and at least start there.
You don't have.
It is in action items?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, good.
Yes.
So it would just be a matter of a motion to adopt.
I'm sorry, just wanted to ask this. Do you have another question?
I think we should do that, but we're saying we're going to do, these are the, what we're looking at doing, we'll start, but we really won't know until Tuesday what we can do. But we don't want to wait until our next meeting.
Right, I think that, no, I think that voters, it was a very unusual town meeting the other night, and so I think that voters at least are owed an explanation of what is being recommended at this time. So if nothing else changed, this is what would be recommended. And, or if you want to change something, we do that tonight.
Okay. The only thing I like to get clear is when any of us hear the word reduction, even myself, I read it, reduction, and my automatic thought was, oh my gosh, are we laying teachers off? We're not laying teachers off. Basically, when we look at reduction at this point, we're looking at it as.
No.
Right, I just, on that, because we go to vote for that. I don't want you to, I don't want tomorrow morning, all the principals to be going to the schools and there's panic because we use the word reduction.
And I've spoken with, in particular, I know Mrs. Dowling and Mrs. Russo. I've spoken specifically with them, because I don't want to keep that fourth grade as it is, and I don't want to combine the first grades into the second grade. Number-wise, the class sizes are, what are found in many districts, were not many districts, and I don't think it's best. And so, but I had to identify dollar amount.
I get that. Okay, then, how should I word this?
Recommend the changes?
Yeah. May I have a motion to adopt the recommended changes to the budgets, as per Dr. Cronin's document?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Yep.
Aye.
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 There you go. Motion passes, and we'll start the work on that until we know what the next budget is.
In my updates to you each week, I will also keep you apprised of all this and how this is all going, so, because I think we all want the same thing, truly. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Melinda. Tina?
In your packages, I sent a copy of an email that we get from the state to recertify the healthy food certificate.
Do what?
The healthy food certificate. We've done this in the past couple of years. The state requires the Board to approve adopting the program and then also accept the food beverage and, food and beverage exceptions. And it's very specific verbiage that we need to adopt. So I've given that to Anita. So, first of all, let's talk about the finance report. Want to talk about that first?
Oh, as Brian, I'm sorry. As Brian said, we're trending, we're, we've been trending, we haven't had any major changes or any major expenditures coming our way unexpectedly. Our insurance, we're still maintaining and, you know, hoping that we're going in the right direction with that. So there's, nothing significant has been coming forward on it. That's, that's what I have at this point. We just pay attention to what's going to happen in May.
Are you doing, I know in the past, this time of year, we begin looking at open purchase orders because we're getting late in the year.
Yep, I've, we've been, I've started working on that over the last probably month, going through, seeing what's open, if there's anything to be closed down, reviewing, you know, where, if it's something that is a continual purchase order, if we need to increase it, where we stand with it. So I have been working on that. And that's just a, it's a moving target, it's a constant review process. Every time we go through a pay cycle, I sit down and review both purchase orders and make sure we're supposed to be going and that we have the appropriate funds encumbered for what we need.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, our experience has been that there are funds encumbered that aren't going to be used.
Correct.
So that gives us.
Right, and that's what we look at now, because some purchase orders are open in the beginning of the year with the anticipation of spending them, and then that's why we're looking at them to see, you know, well, it's been open for three months, why isn't anything been, you know, are we waiting for something to come in, or what's the status of it? And then, you know, we have those conversations with whoever did the original request, you know. Can we close this? Is this really going to be used and that kind of thing? It's gotten a little bit better over the last, since last year, you know, we've got a little bit tighter with some of our protocol in, just in our, in our office. But it is a constant thing that we do look at, and we want to make sure that if you've requested the money, that you're actually going to spend it, and we don't find out the last week of June, I didn't need to do whatever I wanted to do with it. So it gives us a more real look at it.
That's important to us.
It's very important to us. So. May I have a motion to approve the financial report for the period ending April 30th, 2018?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to read this. That's approval to accept the healthy food option. So the first one is, the action of the mayor's pursuant to CGS section 10-215F, the Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising, excuse me, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups. May I have a motion to accept the healthy food option?
I'm moving.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. I have a question. So does this mean if the senior class is selling, doing a fundraiser on school for project graduation, does that mean they can't sell candy bars?
Not on school property.
Okay.
So.
During the school day.
During the school day, correct. They'd have to do it after hours, it's like a half an hour after school or half an hour before school. If they're doing like a pie fundraiser, they can take the orders, but they cannot deliver in that timeframe. It's got to be, you know, the after-hours.
So then I have another question, and I know we've probably talked about this in the past. You go to a school basketball game or you go to a play.
Those are after-school hours.
Even though it's on school property.
Correct.
It's after-school hours. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have a question. For like that pie fundraiser, typically those are delivered during the day, so would, like, they have to find some time after school?
Typically, what they're supposed to do is, you could, they are delivered during the day, but it would go out to the parents who are supposed to be doing the picking up. So you as a student is not, you're not supposed to be taking them on the bus with you.
Okay. At the high school, yeah, we, this year, so we weren't supposed to do that.
No, no, you know, I think that it's.
They're just trying to make sure that you're not eating the pie on the way home, like, or, you know, like, you're not ordering your pie. like, or, you know, like, you're not ordering your pie. There's certain things, but they don't want you to order like a pizza and do a fundraiser during lunchtime.
Okay.
Is what they're looking for.
Sure.
But the unfortunate news is that, you know, now that we're on camera, I think that this could mean prison time.
Congratulations.
Instead of college.
Open the key in next year's pie.
Your diploma is a new one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, that motion passes. Okay, so the next is, I have to stop laughing, is a motion to accept the exemption for food items for the 2018-2019 school year. The Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, providing that the following conditions are met. I guess I should have read on, but I would have answered my own questions. Okay. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity, for example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates and events. But soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day.
Midnight before?
Yeah.
So you can't sell anything in the morning before?
Yeah, yeah. Location means where the exam, where the event is being held. May I have a motion to accept the exemption for food items?
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And you know this is about reimbursement?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, we should probably talk about that afterwards, since I'm doing this with a smile on my face. Motion to accept the beverage, beverage exemptions for the 2018-2019 school year. The Board, the Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provides that the following, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same places as the food sales. So may I have a motion to accept the beverage exemption?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you want to give a, just free vote for you, why we have to do this to get money from the state?
Right, it's, in order for us to get reimbursement for meals, this is just one of the standards that we have to meet and agree to, and it has to be on record that the board voted, it has to be in the minutes of a board meeting that you voted to honor this.
For each item.
And so, and we really, we really do, kidding aside, we really, we do try to do that.
We do? Well, I was laughing because if I had read down, my, my questions were answered. Thank you on that.
So what I was laughing is, Rachel, I have to pick up the pie at 11:59.
That's right.
Thanks. Can I go to the public comment section of the meeting? Any public comment tonight?
I can save this quick, so.
Sure. Is there anyone else, while she's getting ready, that would like public comment? Yours, okay.
Dawn Zeig, 80 Bishop Street. I was here last month with my friend Danielle regarding the walkouts, the protests, the awareness days, the silences that are now taking place in the middle school. We felt misunderstood as to our intentions that evening. We weren't here to disrespect any child's opinions, beliefs, or values, and we certainly are not against freedom of speech for our tweets, not at all. With so many awareness days taking place across the country of what seems to be a daily basis, our only intent is to no longer entertain these events during the school day. Too much learning time is sometimes being missed due to the distractions of the events. In fairness to any and all children who participate in these individual days going forth, we ask that you just please seriously review our request to equate, to create after school events. We do have with us some signed requests from a growing number of parents and residents who are in agreement, and I do apologize, I'm so nervous talking in public. There's no right or wrong with these days. There's no winning or losing a battle here. Our request is a simple solution to accommodate everyone fairly and equally. So thank you for your consideration, and happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else for public comment?
I just have a question for Dr. Ronald D'Neil, Balzano, Warren's Court. You had said that it, these events are allowed to take place during school time as long as they're not interfering with the actual structured class time, and so they have.
Not really, though. By the standard that's been set by the Supreme Court, they really haven't. There are, there are three things that, that are sort of the guiding principles of, of the days. Is it a substantial disruption to the educational process?
So what does that define as a substantial?
Well, that's legalese, and I think that it would be that the whole day was turned upside down.
So a whole day would have to be interrupted for?
No, no, I, I mean that the whole day, yeah, there would be, that, well, I'm just responding to what I interpret substantial to mean, that there is material interference with school activities and that there represents an invasion of the rights of others. But then it goes on to really define those, and there have been countless court cases on this, and it really, what our students asked to do would not meet the standard, as, as I read, and I'd be happy to share that information with you.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to know what the standard was, so like, how many minutes during the school day are they allowed to miss? And going forward, how many events are going to be allowed during school time? Why can't they be held after school hours?
So I'm just interested, I guess, Mrs. Balzano, until the walkout in March, how many had there been prior to that?
Well, this was the first one, as you and I had spoken about.
Okay, okay, and unfortunately.
At the middle school level, or was it the high school?
Okay. I don't think that it's a common practice.
Absolutely, I don't think so either.
And I don't know, as we'll revisit it again. I think that, but if students come to us with a request, we have to talk with them about it. We need, we need to, not necessarily honor the request, but we need to work with them to decide how we can best do this.
Right, so who then decides what requests are honored?
I think that the principal of the building, it's an administrative decision.
Okay, and how many children would need to come to a principal to decide that they wanted to, say, hold some sort of event? How many children would be needed? Would it be one, or is there a group setting?
I, I think that it would be a group of students, I don't know a number, I can't give you a number, but one student going and wanting to do something, although I have to say that at the high school, we have had one student come forward wanting to do something last year, and we allow that to happen, we put some parameters around it, but we allow that to happen.
Right, so I guess, you know, the concern is, is how many are going to be allowed going further, and for how many minutes during the school day, and when does it become a disruption of class time and, and teaching time and?
Well, I, I think that, as I've thought a lot about this, I think that in the eight years that I've been superintendent, there has not been a day such as the walkout or the day of silence in my eight years at the middle school. So I don't see a pattern developing here. However, I do have to say, we're a public school, and we have to, part of our richness is our diversity, and the day of silence didn't interrupt teaching. I'm telling you, I walked that building, and there are children in that school who are gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender, and to them, it was an affirming day.
That's great. I didn't have any opposition to them holding whatever it is that they wanted to do. My opposition is more to the walkout where the kids were missing actual class time. It was 17 minutes, not including passing time and time that they were in the auditorium speaking afterwards. So, you know, that was class time that they did actually miss.
It was a national movement, as you know.
Right.
I don't think with the help of a higher being that we're not visiting 17 murders at a school on a regular basis, and so I think that it was a national event that gained momentum, and I, I don't know what will be coming in the future, but I know that as I look at the past, there haven't been any, so I suspect they're minimal.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I actually did not plan on getting up today, but I just want to respond to a couple of things I heard. I'm Kim Cohen. I have children at Ridge Road, so I didn't, I didn't make it to the last meeting and realize this was a discussion. I think the day of silence, I've seen it in action when I taught in high school, and I've seen it as a teacher not interrupt. I've seen it bring awareness, and I think the idea of the silence is that all you're doing is just seeing a certain support and that you're allowed to ask questions for it. I think true learning also happens that is intrinsic from where students' interests are and where they want to be, and if you say, you know, the learning time, and no offense to you, Ms. Lapenna, but if there are times during the day where they are watching a movie, or there are plenty of times where my first grader comes home, and we're like, what'd you do today? And we find out, you know, they had, they watched a movie, or that they had this extra time or that, and we're kind of like, okay, well, we'll figure out later on how, like, how your morning went. But 17 minutes of a walkout and what it means to organize and to plan and to execute and to cooperate and collaborate and come up with something that works, or something that is actually going to be presented to other people and to the public, is a whole task in itself, and I think there are a lot of life skills that go into that versus a, a time that you're like, I'm sorry, you have to be sitting at your desk with the teacher, you know, with a book in front of you, you're saying you have to follow the book, and I appreciate the way that you are very organized and want the structure and want the questions and answers, but I think the best learning is going to happen when a kid raises their hand and say, how does that happen? And you say, let me take one hour, and let's figure that out, and let's work together, and let's answer your question instead of, this is what we had scheduled, this is what we had planned. My daughter just spent the last five days writing Mr. Stirk a letter about recycling that she worked really hard on because she's saying, why, why doesn't Ridge Road recycle? When we have bash the trash come in for our assembly and, you know, she's, they're like making musical instruments at home with rubber bands and straws into like these little flutes and, you know, and then she saw, you know, all this paper get dumped out of the recycle bin into the trash and came home being like, why? And she was so upset about it, and I said, write a letter to Mr. Stirk and ask him. So, you know, those are the moments, like, if she wants to start a recycling platform and she's one student, and she is that one student and doesn't have a group behind her and wants to go to the principal, I encourage that, and I want her to be able to do that and not feel like she has to get signatures or get a backup or get a support. If it's something she believes in and that she wants to do to make a difference, I would love to have the school support her in that. So, sorry.
Can I just say, we're not trying to take away any of that from anybody, from any child, another. We're just trying to keep the extra stuff.
I'm going overboard, too much.
Exactly, and going forward, it seems like these days of awareness, especially the day.
Yeah.
And just, that's all we've been trying to say for a month now. I understand what Dr. Cronin's saying 100%, he hasn't seen a lot of this in eight years. However, times have changed drastically over the past just one year, so I think we're all going to see a lot of this going forward.
Guidance, if you have guidance and you have the right faculty advisor that can help structure it in the right way, there are educators too and, and the principals too, work together to make it, I think we just.
I just want to respond to the, first of all, I've quoted everything you said, and it's not that I don't agree with you guys, I just want you to understand that when you talk about these events only happening after school, there is a large number of children who will never be able to participate because they are coming from families that are either two working parents or single working parents. My children would never have been able to participate in any school-wide event that taught them about being activist or being involved or showing leadership if they had to take care, happen after school, because I physically could not pick up my children after school. They had to go home on the bus and, and be with a babysitter because I was working. So it, I think that just, you, you might not have thought about that, but that takes a large number of students who will never be able to participate at.
And I go to great lengths trying to get my son to where he needs to be after school with events.
I, but I, but you have parents that can't. There, there is no physical way to do that. So I, I just think that, that those events for, for working parents should also, you know, for kids of working parents should also be available, and I, I do agree that there aren't, there haven't been that many. I do want to make one comment on the budget, sorry.
That's what I thought you were kidding.
You know, I think that the budget lays out priorities, and I just, I have concerns about having a strength and conditioning coach in the budget, well, we don't have money for field trips that are curriculum-based. So kids who, who want to participate in strength and conditioning, that's great, maybe their parents should pay for it, as students who need, want to participate in curriculum-based field trips at this point often are asked to pay for those things. And then the other piece is with the girls hockey. I've watched that request come in year after year, and it always gets cut, and I feel like it's, it, the board should really look at the fairness of it. You've got a boys hockey that is 100% funded and a girls hockey that's unfunded, and maybe some of the interest comes from the fact that parents don't have the money to lay out, and maybe there are some solutions in that, which could be, you know, boys hockey pays 50%, girls hockey pays 50%, and then they're both funded, but maybe not at the 100% level. We're looking at your athletic program in general and see, are there places where maybe you only need a junior varsity and a varsity team and not a freshman junior varsity and varsity teams to allow students to be able to, to have, you know, athletics on both sides of the coin? And I just, it concerns me with the girls hockey because that's come before this board over and over and over again, and it's always the place that it gets cut, and I also really think that the top priority should be curriculum-based things, including field trips and things like that, where parents shouldn't be asked to pay for those. When athletics has an extracurricular thing that we want to make sure that athletes don't have to pay for, so I just, I want to continue to say that over and over again. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Any other public comment before the board goes into executive session?
Tom Rack, North Haven Education Association. I just want to thank Dr. Cronin and commend the board for their support for not giving out private information, even though there may be some FOI rules and regulations, it seems to me that people's privacy.
It seems to me that people's privacy and specific situations that they are going through need to be protected, and even if you don't put a name to it, there are ways of figuring out who people are. So as long as you can hold out, I, I hope you do. I have no problem with a lot of the information on teachers that goes public. We had a lively discussion in my AP class about my salary, because it was in all the budget documents and some of my students have those. And that's fine, you know, I don't have a problem with that. But these are people who may be going through very, very personal experiences, and I have a, I have some serious concerns about that. Also, in terms of the discussion going on, I teach civics, I teach government, and it's important for our students to understand civic participation and responsibility. And as Dr. Cronin pointed out, and we had a little discussion on the Tinker case last meeting, there are Supreme Court decisions that ensure that students have certain rights. And it's very, very difficult to stop them from exercising those rights legally unless you're going to go through a lot of court cases all the way up to the Supreme Court. And you may win it and probably wouldn't, quite honestly. I think it's better to have students work with and through an administration for those days, and I commend the students and the administration in both buildings for doing that, as opposed to not doing that and they are not required to do that, understand that. They are not required to talk to the administration as long as they don't disrupt the school day. So they're really being very responsible and civic-minded. And I understand the concerns, but you have to understand the legal parameters that the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the school system have to work with it. Thank you.
Okay. Saying nothing else, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss, to discuss matters of personnel?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Before we adjourn tonight, I want to remind everyone to vote on Tuesday, May 15th at the REC Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good night, everyone. Thank you.